Meeting call to order. Madam Secretary, please take role. Yes, every, all board members are present except for Mrs. Jackson. Thank you. Next, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item we have on the agenda is consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second? Second. Discussion. Seeing that there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting consent, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Dr. Beresford, do you have anything you'd like to share about consent at this point in time?
Uh, no, not tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we have action items. We have several action items, all having to do with COVID. And our first, well, three at least. Our first action item, we turn to Mr. McMichael, memorandum of understanding regarding a stipend for additional time and/or effort, uh, excuse me. An MOU regarding a stipend for additional time and effort caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. To that, I turn to Mr. McMichael.
Thank you. As you noted, uh, the next, the three, first three items are related to recommendations for stipends for our employees. Trying to show some recognition for the difficult situation that we all had and, and the additional effort and, and time spent. So the first is a memorandum of understanding for our teachers. And so we're recommending a thousand dollar stipend for our teachers. And that requires a memorandum of understanding because it's changing the contract that we have. And so, so the Teachers Association have, has certainly supports this and have, have approved it. And, and so now we would ask for your approval as well. And, um, if this is approved, then this stipend would be paid out, uh, June the 18th.
Thank you, Ms. McMichael. May I get a motion on the table to approve the 614 of 2020 MOU on CCS stipend due to the COVID-19 pandemic?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Katie?
I just really have a comment. I appreciate the work that's been done by the Carmel Teachers Association and also the administration for supporting our teachers in this very unprecedented year with the time and effort that they've put into. Not only do we have 16,000 students, but we're also one of the largest employers in Hamilton County. So I'm really glad that we can support the people that we employ for all the extra and hard work that they've done for us. So, thank you.
Mr. McMichael, could you touch on how we are financing this place?
Yes, uh, I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to refer to that on the next, uh, on the resolution. But, uh, to answer your question, um, as the board is aware, and, and we are receiving some money from the federal government, um, as a result of the, the pandemic. And, and, um, and you'll recall that we had additional expenses, uh, for a number of things related to COVID, but, um, uh, part of which was for additional teachers. We were, we were running two programs, a virtual program as well as an onsite program and some additional IAs. And so, uh, what enables us to, uh, as much as we would want to, we still have to have the money to pay this stipend. And so, uh, what enables us to do that, uh, is we will use the federal money for, um, direct COVID-related expenses that you'll recall we were paying out of the rainy day fund. And then, uh, we will pay these stipends from the rainy day fund. So essentially we'll trade the dollars that we would have otherwise used for the additional COVID expenses and, and utilize those dollars to pay this. That won't cover all of it, but it'll cover about, um, about 70% of it or so. And the balance will come from the rainy day fund. As you know, um, we have transferred monies from our operation fund to rainy day fund. And, and before COVID even, we had anticipated doing that to also, uh, provide additional cash balance for our operating funds. And, uh, so that's where the money's coming from. And so the next item then is, the next two items are resolutions. The first is a resolution to provide a thousand dollar stipend to, um, all of... Uh, so this resolution is to provide a thousand dollar stipend for administrators, department chairs, occupational therapists, um, physical therapists and nurses. And those are our, uh, the balance of our, um, essentially our salaried employees and, um, uh, and then the next resolution will be for, uh, our, our classified employees. So this one is, is for those employees.
So we've seen a lot in the news about other districts giving larger amounts. And we've also seen, um, other districts receiving larger amounts from government. Can you just give us where we fall and, and how we've determined those amounts?
Yes, our, uh, first, the amount from the federal government is driven largely by, uh, the variation is driven by, uh, level of poverty. And so, as we know, our, fortunately, our level of poverty is much less than the average across the state. Um, our, our, we've received three different, will receive three, uh, um, different amounts from, from the federal government. The most recent of which, uh, to put this in perspective, where we will receive, Carmel will receive $2.2 million. South Bend, for example, that has slightly less enrollment than Carmel, will receive $59 million. IPS is well over a hundred million dollars. So, um, and the township districts are kind of proportional to that. And it's, and it's be, again, it's because they have a much higher poverty level than, than we do. And, um, so, um, the, the amount of money coming from the federal government is, is, it's very significant and it's, uh, and the spread is, is also very great in terms of, kind of low to high. And so, um, we feel that the stipend that we're recommending is that we can manage that financially, um, but we still must maintain, uh, fiscal stability. So this, we feel this is just the best we can do.
Could you talk, you mentioned we, this last one was $2.2 million?
Yes.
Can you tell me the, how much all three together are, please?
Yeah, the first was about 230,000. The second was about 900,000, then 2.2 million. So, three and a half thereabouts.
And are there any stipulations on how much we can spend on our teachers? Because I know from my perspective, and I think most of our, our constituents really would like to see that focused in the classroom.
Yeah.
And, you know, remediation for, and, you know, recovery from, you know, academic loss.
Yeah, so this last round, um, we're required to spend, of the 2.2 million, we're required to spend, uh, 20, minimum of 20% on, um, to try to make up student loss of, of, uh, as a result of the pandemic, academic loss. And, um, um, we did not choose to use the federal money directly for the stipend because the bureaucracy associated with that's pretty, pretty challenging. They're looking to see very specifically the additional time, not just effort. And, um, and I, what they would like to see, I believe, having dealt with, you know, some funds from federal government before, is they would actually, like hourly staff, they want to see how many hours, additional hours did they work, kind of thing. And, uh, so we, we chose, as I said, chose not to go down that path. It was a lot easier for us to, to, um, identify the additional expenses, additional teachers and so forth, uh, and use the federal money for that. And then use local money where we have much more discretion, uh, for this. But, uh, I should also say that the stipends in total are about, about $2.1 million. And, uh, so we're spending the equivalent of all the federal money on the stipend. This, this last federal money. And, um, Amy could be more specific, but the first two rounds, we, we, uh, we focused that money also on, on curriculum and, and instruction.
Okay, and I know I didn't ask anybody this in advance, but could you touch on what we're doing this summer for, um, to help the students who might have had some, you know, slide? Sure. COVID loss, learning loss?
So, um, for this summer, we are offering a variety of different opportunities for our students. At the high school, we are offering, um, students that would like to, um, change their grade if they were not satisfied with their grade, that they can do, um, summer courses on Indiana Online Academy. And so that's, um, virtual. And we typically use that summer school for our high school students. Um, in the past, this year, we do have more, um, students that have enrolled in that. Then we also have, um, a credit continuation or a credit recovery that is onsite at the high school. And these are for our students that are enrolled in our ed mentum courses. They were for this, um, second semester, but they have not had the opportunity to finish the course. And so they can continue that course this summer and where they go into the high school and receive help, um, on, specific help on the courses that they have so that they can finish their courses, um, in ed mentum and get the credit for those courses. So that, um, we have about 50 students that are taking advantage of that piece at the high school. Then at the middle school, we are offering a, it's a more of a, a jump start into the school year. It's at the end of July, we're offering an opportunity for students that, um, are struggling in the area of math. And these are for our students that are, um, that need, both our virtual and our hybrid students, that need additional support in the, um, specific in the area of math for our three middle schools. So our middle schools have sent out invitations for, um, students, um, looking at our lowest achieving students in that area. And then, um, as parents are responding back, they're sending out additional invitations to fill all of the spots for that, for our middle school students. And then our elementary students, we are focusing on our early literacy and we're focusing on our first grade students moving into second grade. Um, and so these students, some of these students might be virtual or they may be, they may have come to school every day. But remember, we left school last year at the end of the quarter. So some of our virtual students, um, came to kindergarten for three quarters of a year and then haven't been in school since. And so we were focusing on those early literacy pieces. And this is a, um, this started on June 1st. Um, we have about 150 students that are working with, focusing on the early literacy. So they're using Orton Gillingham, a multi-sensory approach for that early literacy. And it's a one-on-one virtual instruction. Um, and so the, um, parents and the teachers have figured out times that work. And so the students are receiving help these, um, for four weeks in the summer, um, focused on that early literacy.
Thank you. I appreciate you. You're in prim, my prime two questions. Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. Well, we'll just take them one at a time since they're all different areas. Okay, seeing that there are no other questions at this time, we will go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting the 614 2021 MOU on CCS stipends due to the COVID-19 pandemic? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Next on the agenda, we have the resolution to provide employee stipend to all administrators, department chairs, OTs, PTs and nurses. May I get a motion on the table?
So moved.
Thank you, Pam, second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Open it up to questions. Pam?
Yes, the nurses are those just the ones who are employed by us, but not, um, the ones that employed by St. Vincent?
The answer is yes, in terms of what, what we're, we're acting on this evening, but we are in a conversation with Ascension. We would really like to have all of our nurses, um, receive this, uh, this stipend. And so in that case, as they are Ascension employees, it would go through Ascension and, and, um, but, but we felt, we really felt that, um, the, uh, the Ascension employees are very much a part of our team and so forth. And not only the nurses, but also the therapists, uh, that we recently added, you know, out for student therapy. And, um, so, so we haven't, uh, finalized that at this point, but, um, and you can imagine their bureaucracy, as, as large as they are. So, um, and that's not typical for them. So, so, um, um, we're, we're still in the process of, you're still having those conversations. Not so much conversation, but they have to do it, you know, check a lot of different places to kind of really actually kind of figure out how to do it.
So how many nurses would that involve?
About 20, about 18.
18?
Yeah, most of them are Ascension.
Are Ascension nurses?
Yeah, we have about 20 altogether and...
Oh, so that makes two?
I'm sorry?
How many nurses are?
Yeah, yes, we have, we have our lead nurse Candace. And then we have one or two left that are still.
Okay.
Our employees.
I, I would add Candace put in an incredible number of hours, especially when Mr. Woodward was out and, uh, just did a wonderful job. A lot of the information I shared with you every week about the, um, the pandemic was, was her gathering all that information.
Any other question? Yes.
So Roger, will you just keep us posted which way that goes so that?
Yes.
We can make sure that they're compensated one way or the other?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in support of, um, 614 2021 resolution to provide an employee stipend due to COVID-19 for certified employees, OT, PTs, administrators, department chairs and nurses. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the resolution to provide an employee stipend to all classified employees for additional time and/or effort caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Make it a motion on the table.
So moved.
Thank you, Katie, second? Thank you, Mike. Questions? Pam?
Yes, can you, um, go through the specific classified employees that will be earning this?
Yes, it's, uh, so the parameters for all, all employees were that, uh, that, uh, it's for employees that worked a minimum of 45 days or the equivalent hours to that. And, uh, so it would be essentially all, all that would meet that standard. And this stipend, of course, is, is a dollar amount as opposed to a percentage. And so as you can imagine, both with our teachers, um, as well as, and even more so with our, our classified staff, there's a, there's a huge, uh, variation. I mean, we have three-hour administrative assistants for 182 days, uh, and then we have 12-month, eight-hour-a-day, you know, employees. So there's, there's quite, and then the salaries are all over the place. So, so, uh, so there's quite a spread, but we felt here that, um, everybody was, you know, was under stress and additional effort and so forth. And so, um, in the end, we did not want to kind of overly complicate or try to, try to overly distinguish the, you know, variations of amount. So that the classified is $500 rather than a thousand. So as a group, we, we did recognize that, as a, generally speaking, um, between the hours that they work or the fewer hours that many of them work, um, as compared to, um, full eight-hour day, even school year, let alone if it, if, you know, some of our employees are year-round as well. So, so we did make, you know, a distinction with, with the two large groups, but, but we didn't choose to break it down any further than that.
And, and this also includes IAs? Is that correct?
Yes. It, it essentially includes al, almost all of our employees. And the hesitation is, is as we looked, if somebody, for example, was on a, a year's leave, um, um, and took it less than, you know, to where they were here less than 45 days, then even though they're an inactive employee, but they're still an employee, then they wouldn't receive it. But, but, um, but if they have been here 45 days, um, in total for the school year, then they would be receiving a stipend.
Okay, thank you.
The classified is mostly our hourly workers.
Yeah.
Switch her around there.
Are there any other questions?
So I, I just want to clarify, Roger. So the memorandum of understanding covers the teachers, then the second one covers administrators, nurses, and then the last one is classified. And the reason for the, well, so you've answered those first, that first question. So then the reason for the, uh, one of the reasons for the amount difference is that most of those classified employees are hourly. So if they worked more hours, they got paid more hour, more?
Yes, that's a, that's also a good point. All the classified employees are hourly. So this last resolution, all the, all the employees that that applies to are, are hourly employees. And so you're correct, of course. And many of them did work additional hours, uh, uh, as a result of the pandemic and, and, and of course they were paid additional for those hours. And in some cases, if, if they were already full-time, they were, of course, paid time and a half.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of supporting 614 2021 resolution to provide a stipend due to COVID-19 for our classified staff? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Please note, Louise Jackson has joined us in the minutes. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have Orchard Park Agreement with Carmel Clay Parks and Recreation. For that, we turn to Mr. Beresford. Dr. Beresford?
It's an exciting night. We've been, uh, the big question on a lot of people's minds is what's going to happen with our Orchard Park Elementary School? And, uh, and to give you a little bit of history, pre-pandemic, the year before that, we had had a, a committee of folks that, uh, live in the neighborhoods around Orchard Park. And, uh, we started brainstorming on different, uh, uses for the property and the building. And, uh, we also explored some different options with us and, and, and different organizations. But, um, and then we also had a, even a neighbors, kind of a neighbors meeting at Orchard Park where, uh, we talked with a lot of folks. The number one pick, uh, in all of those settings was, uh, they really were interested in, in keeping it, uh, in a park-like setting, you know, with the playground and the, you know, the beautiful trees there and everything. And, uh, but also, uh, number probably close to, you know, maybe a tie for first or first and second, was, uh, the idea of having like a community center of some kind, utilizing the building that way. Uh, the building is not in great shape. And so, uh, you know, we've kind of gone through a lot of different thought process on that. And really where we really centered back around to was a park, uh, to have Orchard Park. And so, uh, we started having conversations, Mr. McMichael and I met with, uh, the Parks Department, and they've expressed some interest in it as well. So this is, this resolution is really the first step in us partnering with the Parks Department, uh, to look and see what can be done with the structure, what can be saved, what can, should be, um, you know, taken down. And then also what kind of a park could that be? And, uh, and the nice partnership of it, because one of the things that we were interested in was having space where we could bring groups of students or maybe even groups of, uh, teachers, uh, for professional development and have a bigger space where we could do that kind of thing, training and, and, uh, so, um, so this is really the first step of us starting this partnership with Parks Department where we can maybe have that space and then also have the park and, uh, and also be able to use that, uh, you know, by the school system and also by the community. So it's really been a, uh, kind of a full circle, uh, with a big delay in the middle, you know, by the pandemic. But, uh, so this resolution, uh, is how, you know, government entities, um, can partner together and, uh, and work with the property and the structure and, and move forward from there. There's no definite, we don't have a blueprint. It's, we're really at the starting, um, you know, phases of this. And, uh, we've talked with the Parks Department, they're interested and they're going to look and see what they can contribute and what we can contribute and work together to, uh, to really make that a nice special place. And, uh, the other thing I'll add to you, I've actually had another, uh, meeting with the, um, Carmel Historical Society about what kind of a, a monument or what kind of a, of a, a thing can we put in the, in the park to mem, um, you know, to memorialize Orchard Park School? And, uh, and what a special place that has been in our community for so long. And, uh, those guys have lots of great ideas. They're, I was like, boy, we're, we're hitting on the right door on this one because, uh, uh, they, they have some good ideas and they're going to help us with that as well. So, uh, so yeah, we're kind of turning the corner on, uh, you know, what we can do with that property and, uh, that location. It's not too far from the Monon Trail. There's just a lot of opportunity there. And I think it really meets, uh, you know, like I said, the number one interest of the community where they really wanted to still have that, that presence and that, that nice space. And, uh, you know, our parks are national leaders and so our Parks Department will, will do it right. So anyhow, so here we go. It's the, the starting, the launching pad is started and it starts with this resolution. So I'm bringing this resolution to you so that we can, uh, begin that partnership and that process of, of, uh, of kind of reimagining Orchard Park.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. Make it a motion on the table to approve. Okay. Thanks, Pam. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Katie. Discussion. Pam?
Yes, have we thought about the possibility of planting an apple tree?
No.
And if you think about the history of the area, that used to be an apple orchard before it became an Orchard Park Elementary.
I'll add it to the list and we may put you in charge of Orchard Development.
Louise?
I'm really excited about that property and partnership with the Carmel Clay, uh, Parks and Recreation. So I was just going to ask, it's not even a question, more of a comment. It'd be amazing if we could involve the students in whatever we do to memorialize, right? So with the mural that high school students are working on, um, for the parks, I just think we've got some really awesomely talented kids in our district. And so what a wonderful way to celebrate their talent and the school if we could leverage that, so.
That's a great idea.
Any other question or comment at this time? Okay, well then it's time to take a vote. All those in favor of supporting Orchard Park Resolution Agreement with Carmel Clay Parks Recreation and Carmel Clay Schools? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Next on the agenda, we have reports. To that, we turn to Dr. Beresford.
Well, it was an exciting week, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to try to go quick, but there was a lot going on. And, uh, as you know, the, the school year ended and we had a great graduation for service, you know, for ceremonies and, uh, kids did a great job with that. And, uh, but now we're kind of in the, what I call the postseason because, uh, the only thing left of the, of the last school year is our spring sports. And so, uh, uh, I'll go back to last Friday, that'd be the June 4th and 5th. And, um, we had five spring sports that were completing their seasons at that, you know, during those two days. And so it started on Friday night with the boys' track and field team dominating the state finals and winning the state championship in track, uh, 68 to 40, which, um, is a big number in, uh, in track and field. So they became state champions number one for the weekend. Uh, then the next day, Saturday morning, the girls' tennis team defeated Homestead High School to get to the finals of the, uh, of the tennis state championship. But in between that time, the girls' lacrosse team was playing Hamilton Southeastern for the state championship and girls' lacrosse at Warren Central, which, uh, they went on to win that, uh, let me see, that was 13 to 8. And that was the third straight state championship for the girls' lacrosse team. So, uh, so that was amazing. Then we bounced back to North Central to watch the finals of the girls' state championship against, uh, South Bend, um, St. Joseph and, uh, who were Carmel and South Bend-St. Joseph have been one-two all year long. So it's number one against number two. And, uh, as the match progressed, um, Carmel was down. It was looking like, uh, that, uh, we were in trouble. And then, uh, big time rally by doubles team and, uh, and by our number three singles, Nora, and, uh, end up winning that four to one for state championship number two. Uh, so from there, uh, we just kept moving right along and, uh, went to the girls' state championship track meet, which is that Saturday. And, uh, very first event was the, uh, the 3,200 relay. And our team of, uh, Annie Christie, Jasmine Klopstad, uh, Mahalat Zee and Abby Grogan were the state champions in the, that's, we used to call it the two-mile relay. And so the lady pounds ended up finishing 10th. And then, um, the boys' lacrosse then faced off with... And then the boys' lacrosse then faced off with HSE for the state championship in lacrosse. And they, Southeastern got up pretty fast and pretty far, but the Hounds made this big drive comeback, and they just came up a little bit short. I said they kind of ran out of time, but the, but what great effort, you know, that that took. So, but when you add up the IHSAA state championships, we were able to move it up to 161 state titles now for Carmel Clay Schools, and so it's just an incredible thing. On top of that, Carmel Rugby won in the last second try, and they went in dramatic fashion. The girls' All-Star basketball against Kentucky was going on, and Bridget Dunn was chosen for that, although she had had a season-ending knee injury. And so she was basically just supporting all her teammates out there. And to start the last game against Kentucky, they put her in the game and let her score a basket, and then Kentucky scored a basket, and then they, you know, took it out from there. So what great sportsmanship for them to let a, you know, a really good player who's injured be participate in the game, get her name in the book. So I was pretty impressed by that. And of course, our Hounds coach, Ryan Osborne, was coaching the boys' All-Star team, and they swept Kentucky. And also Brian Waddell, you know, our senior star from the state championship team, was on that team, so they represented well. Our Carmel High School Girls Assistant Coach, which is Coach Carla Chin Baker, was just announced to be inducted into the Canadian Soccer Hall of Fame. She's from Canada, and so that's huge in the world of women's soccer, so congratulations to Coach Baker. And if you want to just keep running with this, we have several Hounds, former Hounds, competing for a spot in the Olympics, on the Olympics team. And I think there's five of our kids swimming tonight, actually, for a chance to be in the, you know, on the Olympic team, so it's just amazing. But the last thing of the season, I'm going to call it my pre-bell ringer here, is that the boys' golf team starts tomorrow, and they're not, you know, favored to win, but, you know, they've got a good a shot as anybody. And so they'll be playing on Tuesday, and they do two rounds, so Tuesday and Wednesday to determine state championship in boys' golf. So we're pulling for the Hounds and hoping that they get that done. If they would win the state, that would take us to eight state championships this year, which would be a new record, Indiana record, so. A lot of good things going on in the world of sports here at the end. I want to finish, because we've gotten quite a few communications with people wondering about what school's going to look like on August the 12th, you know, our first day of school. And I wanted to let everybody know that, you know, we're still monitoring the CDC, the Indiana State Department of Health, and there are guidance, and that guidance has changed since May, and it's going to continue to change. So one thing that we can count on is going to change. But as of right now, what the Indiana State Department of Health has released is called preliminary guidance for schools. And this is what we know as of right now. Vaccinated staff and students do not need to wear masks, and they will not be quarantined if they're identified as a close contact due to being exposed to COVID-19. Unvaccinated staff and students are recommended to wear masks, except while eating, social distance, the same kind of three to six feet, and if they are close contact due to exposure, they would have to quarantine. And they're using the same quarantine numbers as last, as we ended with. We're going to be updating our safety plan this week with these new updates, and if there's any more by that. And we will continue to do that throughout the summer as things change. So, and then we're also going to have on the website an opportunity for anybody, any parents or community members that would like to weigh in on that plan, can give feedback through that website, they'll be able to use a form to do that on the website. And I want to stress that this is preliminary guidance, you know, by the Health Department, so we are anticipating changes, and we'll keep communicating those as they occur on our website. We remain optimistic that we'll return to the old normal, you know, you keep talking about the new normal, and we want to go to the old normal, in this ball, and we'll continue just to look to our medical community for guidance. And so that's where we are at this point in time. I know there's a couple of districts that their boards made resolutions to make those decisions, and we think it's a little bit early to make those decisions, but we hopefully will end at the same place. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Beresford. I have a couple of questions, and the rest of the board might have some questions as well. When do you foresee being able to make that recommendation? I think families are interested. I'm interested, but I would rather have more information, so I can have the most lenient of recommendations, or, you know...
Yeah, well, you know, we don't have any control over like the speed of the CDC or the Indiana State Health Department, but we do have our plan set in July to bring our group back together and look at our plan, and if there's any tweaks we need to make, you know, moving forward. So I think July, you know, probably mid-July into July, we'll know for sure what direction we're heading. So we're, like I said, we're optimistic based on what's happening around us, but, you know, we're still not, we aren't medical professionals, you know, we're educators, but we'll make the best decision we can. We'll bring that recommendation to you.
So do you foresee, are you expecting then at the July 24th meeting? Because that is our next board, well, we've got a June one, but that is the board meeting that we'll have in July, that we will have a recommendation at that point in time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, definitely by then.
Pam?
Yes, first of all, do you think we'll possibly be requiring masks for all students under 12?
At this point in time, that's the guidance, that's the recommendation. And as I said, the way it's worded is that they are recommending that for students. And so our kids in grades six through 12 have access to vaccinations, so, you know, they could, that won't be an issue for them, based on this guidance that we have right now. The current guidance for the younger kids would be, you know, to have them to do the masks, similar to what we did in the past.
And unvaccinated students should probably be wearing masks?
That's what the recommendation is from the Department.
Okay, and if we're going to not quarantine students that have had the vaccine, how are we going to know who to not quarantine?
That's a great question, and we haven't got any guidance on that yet, but I would imagine it'll be the honor system. I don't see how it could, we could collect those records or accurately be able to find that, unless there's some magic registry that I don't know about. So right now, it would just be simply, typically like we do with contact tracing, we'd ask people, you know, have you been vaccinated?
And the other thing is, they just reported on the TV tonight about the India variant, and unvaccinated people are at high risk, of course, for getting that, and this state isn't doing real well on vaccinating. So I'm hoping that by the time school starts, we've got a higher percentage of people being vaccinated.
And there was another, they're actually bringing out another vaccine pretty soon, they announced it this morning, Noravax has got one, so that'll be the fourth one for, I think, adults. But the numbers have been pretty good on the vaccinations that we have now, that they all do really well against the variants. So we have heard that from the medical community.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great, seeing that we have no other questions. Make it a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.